All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask you all to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, can we have the roll call?
Keith Hoffer?
Here.
Dehaven?
Here.
Spruill?
Here.
Dobree?
Here.
Randall? Lewis?
Here.
Medina?
Here. Unfortunately, Councilmember Randall could not join us tonight, but we do still have a quorum. Do we have approval of the agenda as presented, or any changes needed?
Madam Mayor, I move that council approve the agenda as presented for September ninth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Motion made by Lewis and seconded by Dobree.
Keith Hoffer?
Aye.
Dehaven?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Dobree?
Yes.
Spruill?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes. All right, we're moving on to number two on our agenda, the consent agenda. The listing on our consent agenda is a group of items to be acted on with a single motion and vote. This agenda is designed to expedite the handling of limited routine matters by city council. Either the public or council member may request that an item may be removed from the consent agenda at the time prior to council's vote. I'll ask if a citizen or council member wishes to have any specific item removed from the consent agenda for discussion after reading the list. A, approval of the city council meeting minutes for August twelfth, nineteenth, and twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five. Approval of the expenditure list for September ninth, twenty twenty-five. C, approval of a renewal application of a retail liquor store license for Tubrose LTD DBA Cork and Bottle, located at four-four-three East Main Street, Cortez. D, approval of a special event permit for fundamental needs to be held on September nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. And E, approval of a transfer of ownership for West Slope Liquors, Inc., DBA West Slope Liquors, located at twenty-two-twelve-dash-one East Main Street, Cortez. Would anyone like an item removed for discussion?
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Dobree and seconded by Dehaven.
Spruill?
Yes.
Lewis?
Aye.
Dehaven?
Yes.
Keith Hoffer?
Aye.
Dobree?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes. All right, we're going to move on to number three on our agenda, public participation. There's no limit to the number of speakers, although public comment will be held to an overall time limit of thirty minutes. Speakers have a time limit of three minutes per person, may only speak once, and may not cede time to another commenter. All right, and those in the audience who either filled out a comic card will go through these first. If you didn't get a chance to, you'll still get a chance to speak. Thirty minutes is, right now, it's nine-thirty-three. Make sure the microphone is on and green, and then the light will indicate yellow when you have a minute left, and then red when the microphone turns off. All right, I would like to invite Betsy to the microphone. All right, and just start with your name and area you live in. There should be a button at the front, and then a green light will come on, of the microphone.
Got it.
Perfect.
Okay. My name is Betsy Doolin, and my husband and I own a business on Main Street. It is actually adjacent to the new store that's gone in. Yeah, the adult toy store, that's the new store that's on Main Street. We are concerned that it's going to cause some issues with the people coming and going from our store. We're concerned that it's, it's just not good, it's not healthy, it's not moral. We would like to see something done about that being allowed on Main Street to begin with. But, yeah, we're, we're just not happy with it. We're not happy with it at all. It's really going to hamper our, our, our business, we feel. And I think that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'll invite Chuck up next.
My name is Chuck Doolin. I'm Betsy's husband. We own Nitty Gritty Off-Road there on Main Street. And this new store is right next to ours. A lot of our concern is it, it's on the same block as the, the kids' sports center. We're right downtown in the middle. Cortez Retail Enhancement is trying to promote the kids coming in on Halloween and doing trick-or-treat through all the businesses. And we, we think that this is very wrong for the kids to even see that in our town. So I'm very concerned about the kids. You know, and this kind of a store promotes all kinds of bad things that is happening in our world. And I think it's, it's, it's very wrong for it to be on Main Street. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to invite James McGinnley.
James McGinnley, seven days a week on the streets with our most vulnerable population, all day long, because they can't resist the joy of it. There's unbelievable life-giving going on here. That courtroom over there, if you haven't been there Monday morning, go. Judge Padilla, Mr. Buffington, the same thing, three or four days a week up at the county court. The care they take with our most vulnerable people is breathtaking. I wouldn't bet there's anything like it else in the country. I can't believe it. But I've been seeing it daily for seven months now. And we're crushing their work needlessly, unintentionally. Two of the folks they work with certainly have been through their system, have been stable for seven months. I now see Facebook posts and behavior that is going off the cliff. Why? Because we told them we don't care if they have a safe place to sleep. I didn't say a room. I didn't say a condo. I said a safe place to sleep. I don't think we intend that. Many people don't know, Bridge Shelter is only open six months a year. So starting in March, mid-March, as they realize, oh, where am I going to go? We are telling them, we don't care where you go. Yes, people are being killed on the street, they're being raped, they're being mugged. We don't care. I think we do care. We don't need brick and mortar. We could do it with a wink and a nod. Hey, you know what? There's scrub over, and whatever that location is. If you sleep there and you don't cause any trouble, I think you'll be okay. That was Walgreens until several days ago. I don't object that a dozen people were, were evicted from there, but that we didn't tell them, by the way, go over here, you'll probably be okay. Or we could do a pilot. I know a church that's interested. I know a citizen that would donate their land for a pilot, where, not an open-ended pilot, hey, if you guys screw up, we'll shut you down. And we're not going to give you an official approval, but give it a try, see if you can do it. It's not housing that we, it's dignity. We do care. We don't want you mugged. We would like you safe. I could go on for hours. It's what I live. I hope someone tells me, hey, James, here's how you could help make that happen, because I don't know. And I'm open. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. All right, I'd like to invite Rachel Marshall up.
Hi. So I'm a resident of the planet Earth. I have come here in the last few months to make my permanent residence. I actually was born in Colorado, put a long stint in, in Carbondale, went to Denver, came back, went to school in undergrad and graduate school in Colorado. But what I would like to say is that Main Street USA is found in Disneyland and Disney World. The ethos of Main Street USA is something that we need to think about. Okay? So I am a licensed clinical mental health counselor. I am here with Charles, and I know sometimes he doesn't have great things to say that you would like to hear. But what I will say is that the ethos of our community rests on Main Street USA. Whether that's here, whether that's in Washington, DC, whether that's in Denver, Colorado, what I will say is there are certain things that we allow to be part of our ethos and part of what we value as human beings on this planet. Would we have a mega-center shopping mall like what is found in Minneapolis in Main Street, USA? Would we have a vehicle hub that manufactures, manufactures vehicles on Main Street, USA? It depends on which Main Street we're talking about. But what I will say is an adult novelty store, novelty store, adult store, take any of those things, things separated. However, it creates an ethos that needs to be understood and agreed upon with our community at large. So what I'm impelling you and encouraging you and absolutely asking you to do before we just randomly place businesses that represent our ethos onto Main Street, USA, it doesn't matter the town. What matters is that we believe in something that we can offer our children, that we can have anyone who comes into our community say, wow, this is a representation of who you are, what you believe in, why you're here. Those are the things that we need to think about on Main Street, USA, regardless of the town, the principality, the ecosystem. It doesn't matter. What matters is that all of us can feel good about what we bring to Main Street, USA. And that is what I want to impart to you, regardless of this.
Thank you. All right, I'd like to invite Susan Chemnitz.
Good evening. Susan Chemnitz, five-one-one South Cedar Street. And I would like to address remarks that were made by at least two council members at the last meeting in reference to hybrid meetings. When you say things like, everyone else does it, or imply we need to do it just to keep up with the times, you really are not inspiring a lot of confidence in the people who elected you. We elected you to represent us, not everyone else. If you truly believe that kind of group thing, then perhaps we should replace you with an AI, which can do lots of group thing, and do it much faster and better than you do. Please use your intellect when you're making decisions about this community. That said, I object to hybrid meetings. And this is mainly because the technology is fairly unreliable, but also because participants sometimes are clearly not paying attention. Time after time, I have been in meetings waiting while IT tries to figure out what's wrong, or a Zoom participant is missing in action when asked a question. That's really not fair to all the city staff and the public who show up to these meetings to hear what you have to say. I believe that you should be present in this room, just like the rest of these people are. Well, that's just my opinion. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Susan. All right, I'd like to invite Tiffany Randall to the podium.
I'm a lot shorter than everybody else. Hi, Tiffany Randall. I own Levana Hanger and am a landowner in Cortez. I am speaking to you tonight to express my serious concern about the opening of Bay's Little Secret at thirty-seven East Main Street. It's clear this store markets itself as an eighteen-plus adult-only establishment, selling adult toys, lingerie, games, and other sexually oriented products. I recently spoke to staff and learned that the business was not classified as an adult novelty store because only thirteen percent of its retail space, which is almost five hundred square feet, bigger than bigger than Merryweather's Market, is dedicated to adult merchandise. By who, I don't know. But the codes explicitly allows for classification based on either square footage or revenue. In retail, square footage alone is a poor indicator. High turnover lines of adult products, even in smaller spaces, can generate well over 15% of the total revenue of this business. By focusing solely on a selling area, the city has effectively created a loophole that ignores the true intent of the regulations. The Land Use Code stated intent couldn't be more direct. To regulate adult entertainment businesses to promote the health, safety, morals, and general welfare of the citizens of the city and to establish reasonable and uniform regulations to prevent the deleterious location and concentration of sexually oriented businesses. It goes on to say that to help reduce and eliminate the adverse secondary effects. Allowing Bays to operate under the guise of less than 15% selling space directly undermines this purpose and intent that's set out by your City of Cortez code. This isn't just about zoning. This is about maintaining the moral character and economic vitality of our downtown as the code intends. Over the past two years, five new businesses have opened just on this block, and the city has actively promoted tourism revitalization, beautification of our downtown. Introducing an adult-only store in the core of Main Street chips away at that momentum and damages nearby entrepreneurs who depend on family-friendly foot traffic. The other issue that arises with this interpretation of the code is the way that this is discretionary of what is technically considered adult items. To me, explicit lollipops and other items that are not appropriate to mention at this meeting that are sold at this establishment openly sold in the front portion of this store is adult-only and should be regulated and enough for this store to begin.
All right, thank you. All right, Charles Jeter.
I'm mayor and council. This is Charles Jeter, and I always like to see you guys. I just wish I wasn't complaining all the time. So, I have the numbers and the stats because you know I'm a stats guy and I geek out on this stuff. And so, I'm going to tell you, I don't know what people were thinking about this. I found a Small Business Administration, a Colorado DOLA study, and three other ones with very little effort. They talk specifically about the quantification of how much damage this explicit store does. Now, I mean, I can't make this stuff up. You guys are making it easy on me, and I want to challenge, okay? But this is like pants-on-head stupid of actually approving this, okay? I mean, this doesn't make any sense. The proximity of adult businesses to mainstream retail, from one study with Cunningham and McCarthy in 2017, 15 to 20% drop in foot traffic. 10% conversion rate decline due to negative perceptions. Okay, SBA report 2022 says analyzing retail clusters, it looks at a 12 to 18% foot traffic reduction areas adjacent to adult stores. It attributes it to social stigma and reduced customer confidence. And here's my favorite one. Colorado DOLA 2020 report on vice-related land use impacts in Colorado found that mixed-use districts near adult-oriented businesses experienced a 14 to 22% decrease in pedestrian activity, linking this zoning conflicts and community backlash. Obviously, this is what we're seeing. Graham and Lou, empirical quantification reinforces this 16 to 25% reduction in foot traffic, 8 to 12%, this is based on spatial analysis of retail performance, GIS. And mayor, I know you're an expert in that. So, we're looking at that, and now we're not even talking about the safety and security concerns from this adjacency effect. We have issues like these awesome things in store for all these business owners, increased crime rates, loitering, which is still questionably prosecuted here, vandalism with a 20 to 30% uptick in reported incidents near these locations. We have a 10 to 15% rise in customer avoidance driven by fears of harassment and unsafe environments, particularly at night. So, this is kind of odd because it's right next to a nightclub, right? But this challenges the urban planning narrative that diverse land use enhances safety. It suggests instead that adult store proximity creates vulnerability hotspots. This study looks at their lack of empirical focus, and I also have all the studies and everything back with the clerk. So, I can't wait to go door-to-door with more clown show buffoonery evidence next time we have an election cycle. And maybe this time, I'll have a best-of newsreel of the sequence and how we got here with this whole thing, okay, in the finest style. And I dare the Journal Herald to connect the dots, please. You guys get paid for this. All right, thank you very much. I'll leave you with time on the clock.
Thank you. All right, that was all our comment cards. But if there's other people in the audience, we have about 10 minutes left. So, we could have three more speakers if they use all three minutes. Would anyone else like to be heard? Thank you. And then we'll have a second comment section at the end of the night, so.
The push button.
Should be at the front of the microphone. Just make sure the green light comes on.
Hello, I'm Linda McKnight, and I own a business downtown. I'm just a few doors down from this that has opened. I get a lot of tourists in my store, and they talk about how beautiful our town is and how they just love it. Every single one of them have children with them. I do not want them to accidentally walk into this store. They're going to be scarred for life. This store should not be that accessible to anyone. It should be outside of city limits where the kids aren't around it. The foreigners, they don't know what they're walking into when they go downtown Main Street, and they walk in there, and now we're scarred. So, it's going to hurt me. It's going to hurt all the businesses downtown, and I'd really like to let, just letting you guys know. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience, please?
Hi there. Thank you, mayor and council, for allowing me to speak. My name is Mike Levy, 491 East Coronado Avenue in Cortez. I'd like to support James's vision of what Cortez could be by providing a safe place for people without homes to live in a safe place in our county, in our city in hours and the days when the bridge shelter is closed. Now, we really need a place for these people to feel safe instead of just sending them to the sagebrush out behind Walmart and Walgreens. So, James has a wonderful vision of what we can do for Cortez, and I just urge you to listen and think about what he's proposing. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, do we have any other audience members to speak? Can you send them a comment? Send us an email of your comments? Thank you. All right, then no more public comment. We'll close this session and we'll move on on our agenda. Pardon me. All right. Number four on our agenda is presentations. We have none tonight. Excuse me. All right, number five is public hearings. 5A is ordinance number 1344, series 2025, presented by Jeremy Patton, our airport director.
Mayor, while he's coming up, do you want me to quickly comment on?
Yes, since most of you here were for the same topic, I'd like to defer to our city manager to kind of share some background information.
Yeah, and the one public speaker had a pretty well understand that government, we're very limited on what we can or cannot do. We are literally limited by the law. The current law is that under these circumstances where it is less than 15% of the square footage is used for this purpose, it is lawful. And if it's lawful, we have no authority or anything to take any action against them. We have been there. We have literally measured it. We have done everything we possibly can to ensure that they're in compliance. And also, we understand that it is an 18-year-old plus area that is shielded, so youth cannot see what's in there. So, it is not something that, you know, I get the emotional piece behind this, and I understand how it would make me feel and how it makes me feel as a. But whether I agree with it or not, we are bound by the law, and that's what we're governed by here. So, council does not have the authority just to arbitrarily take action under this case. So, I just wanted to comment on that. If anybody does have questions about it, my office is always open to discuss. And we also have our city planner here that, Jason Armstrong, that is also happy to talk about that to any community member as we explain the law behind that. So, thank you, mayor.
Thank you. All right, Jeremy.
Good evening, mayor, city council. So, as for background, council approved on first reading ordinance 1344, series 2025, the assignment of the airport land lease agreement from Lance Lane Kim, correction, the seller to Robert J. Brown, the buyer, hangar lot, South 8, on the 26th of August 2025 in the regular meeting. Council will consider the approval of ordinance 1344, series 2025, on second reading pending public hearing or discussion. The assignment of the 40-year land lease effective 27 March 2018 will assign the land lease on the South Lot 8 to Robert J. Brown. And please see a note for the correction to the date in the ordinance as the first reading was on 26th August 2025, second reading being set for tonight, the 9th of September 2025. For fiscal impact, we already are in the agreement with Lane Kim. This current year's lease rate was $1,870.50, and future rates are adjusted on a four-year CPI average, which we will be adjusting this fall. Recommendations is that staff recommends that council approve on second and final reading ordinance 1344, series 2025, the assignment of the airport land lease agreement to Robert J. Brown, barring any questions.
Jeremy, I do have a question. When someone is ready to move out of the area, give up their hangar, is there a wait list that's developed? How did this individual know that this was a potential sale?
Well, it's a good question, but in this case, and in our, most of our hangar situations at the airport, these are privately owned. So, when somebody wants to sell their hangar to somebody privately, that's on them. We don't own the structure. We just leased the land. So, this seller had the ability to sell it to someone he knew was interested in the hangar. If we owned, the city used to own hangars, they sold the three of them in between 2014 and 18 of our call, which lost quite a bit of revenue, to be honest. But then we would have a say in that. We would go through the wait lists and let everybody know that these hangars became available and work through the process. But these are strictly private structures on land leases.
Thank you. You know, we talked about this at last council meeting. I think we're very fortunate to have an individual that's interested in this. And in my view, I see this very straightforward. Barring any other questions from council members, I move.
We're going to make a, we got to open for public hearing. Yeah. Do we have the either involved party here?
No, one's in residence in Sedona and the other's in South Carolina currently, so.
Okay. Okay. Well, then we'll go ahead and open the public hearing portion of this. If anyone from the audience would like to speak on behalf of the, speak about this ordinance, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing portion. And then any other questions? Otherwise, we'll put a motion on the floor.
I will go back. First of all, I apologize because I should have realized this is open for public comment. But seeing none and seeing no other council members speaking on this, I move that city council approve on second and final reading ordinance number 1344, series 2025, the assignment of the airport land lease agreement to Robert J. Brown. Second.
Motion made by Lewis and seconded by Dobry.
De Haven?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Spruul?
Yes.
Keith Offer?
Aye.
Dobry?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes. All right, we're moving on to number six on our agenda, unfinished business. We have none tonight. So, number seven is new business. 7A is the runway rehabilitation, bid, award, and contract signature authorization, presented by Jeremy Patton, our airport director.
Good evening again. So, we sent this through council last meeting. We actually needed to send it again. We did not have the authorization for signature on there, and so, we're basically revisiting the matter. For some background, we, you know, we've been designing this runway project from '23 to '25 with an anticipated construction in the fall of 2025. The bid was posted to BidNet on April 4th with a closing date of May 1st. And after several months of federal input modification of standards, grant programming, we're awarding the contract at this time. Seventy-six plan sets were held by contractors, but only one bid was received. After receiving input from several contractors, it was determined the reasons for not submitting, for them not submitting a bid were due to limitations with staff, mobilization costs, material procurement, and project management. And that Four Corners has the main material plant and span of control to do this complex of a project. And they've done several runways in other places, multiple states. And we would have much higher charges with other bids as we were expecting. Despite receiving only one bid, this is the best option for us as it maintains a strong working relationship with the local operation and is physically responsible. After several weeks of negotiations and bid review at the federal, state, and local level for cost reasonableness, we have determined the project to be reasonably bid. Barring delays with grant issuance, we are at a point to award this contract in order to remain on schedule for the September to November, mostly November, construction timeline. And again, that closure, the full runway closures in October. The sole bidder being Old Castle Southwest Group Doing Business as Four Corners Materials is being recommended for this award. The contract has been drafted by our on-call engineers, Garver LLC, and will be reviewed and confirmed prior to signature. Previously, on the August 12th regular meeting, the bid was approved. Following the award, a more detailed review of the contract documents, which are very lengthy, it's almost 500 pages in total, revealed the packet presented was incomplete and must be reconsidered for approval. Additionally, authorization of the city manager to sign a final contract and the notice to proceed is being considered. The total cost of the awarded project is $8,33,251, or sorry, $8,33,251.97. The overall project, everything included, is 8.6 as it explains. But this is to the contractor. This includes contract engineering scopes of work and grant matches. The total anticipated ARPA funds to be expended on grant matches and local obligations is $352,926.53. Staff recommends that council authorize the city manager to negotiate and sign the contract with Old Castle Southwest Group Doing Business as Four Corners in the amount of $8,33,251.97 for the runway, 2025 runway 321 rehabilitation, lighting upgrades, and NAVAIDS. Any questions?
I guess, how are we on the schedule of the work, then? Are we doing good?
We're good. The contractor's getting a little angsty to get mobilized because they've got a crush and start the materials. But we have a schedule from the contractor at this time. We've got schedules for pay apps, and we are well on our way to expending that ARPA value in this that has to be spent by the end of the year. We should have that accounted for by mid-October. And then overall schedule, this will bleed into March of '26 because there are certain elements of the project that we cannot do during the winter, like cutting the grooves in the asphalt and the striping, the permanent markings on the runway. So, this is a long project, but the meat of it is being done in October, really. So, yeah, we're looking pretty good.
Thank you. I move that council authorize the city manager to negotiate and sign the contract with Old Castle Southwest Group and DPA Four Corners in the amount of $8,33,251.97 for the 2025 runway 321 rehabilitation, lighting upgrades, and NAVAIDS.
Second.
A motion made by De Haven and seconded by Lewis?
Dobry?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Spruul?
Yes.
Keith Offer?
Aye.
De Haven?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, Jeremy. All right, we're gonna move on to seven B on our agenda, the equipment purchase for the water treatment plant, uh, presented by Casey Simpson, our interim director of Public Works.
Good evening, mayor and council. Um, the water treatment plant is in need of a new compact track loader. This will aid in the overall property maintenance, unloading of chemicals, and address the variable performance of the thirty-plus-year-old, um, loader that's there at the water treatment plant currently. The city staff utilized Sourcewell to get the lowest competitive government rate, um, and then selected the lowest, uh, priced loader on that list. The, the loader that the staff suggests is a, from Four Rivers Equipment, it's a twenty-two-five John Deere three-two-five G compact track loader. Uh, it's our recommendation that the council approve the acquisition of the compact track loader for the water treatment plant from Four Rivers Equipment LLC in the amount of seven-nine thousand five hundred forty-seven dollars and twenty-two cents. The amount to be fully covered by funds budgeted.
Um, the only question I had is, uh, is there any city preference on, on the brand that, to align with our other equipment for maintenance?
The shop supervisor did approve, or, um, he likes this, this specific track loader. Um, I'm not quite sure that a machine of this size, we, we don't have enough of these machines to make it super beneficial to have multiple John Deeres or Bobcats, or certain departments need a Bobcat that has a specific capability that other departments don't. So, that didn't really play into this selection. It was mostly the cost. And, um, I believe this one has a higher load capacity to the others of similar size. Thank you.
Casey, you mentioned that the old one would go up, uh, for sale at auction. And any ballpark figure on what that might go for?
We haven't investigated that yet, as we would wait this approval before seeing that. We do have four, uh, government equipment auction vendors that we talked to about this. Um, they typically give us a, a, a recent similar sale as a, as a placeholder for it. Um, that being said, the, the one we're selling is pretty old. So, I'm, I'm not hopeful that we're gonna recoup a whole lot, unfortunately.
I move that city council approve the acquisition of a twenty-two-five John Deere three-two-five G compact track loader from Four, Four Rivers Equipment LLC for the water division in the amount of seventy-nine thousand five hundred forty-seven dollars and twenty-two cents.
Second.
Motion made by Dehaven and seconded by Spruul?
Lewis?
Yes.
Dehaven?
Yes.
Keef Offer?
Aye.
Dobry?
Yes.
Spruul?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes. Thank you, Casey. All right, we're on seven C on our agenda, letters of support for Montezuma County, uh, Paths to Mesa Verde Trail, uh, presented by Drew Sanders, city manager. But we've got, uh, council member Dobry.
Before we get started on this, um, I work for, I work for the county and have, have done work on the, on grant writing for the Paths to Mesa Verde Trail in the past. So, I'm gonna recuse myself from this issue.
Thank you. We'll call you in when we're done. Okay.
Okay. Mayor and council, uh, Montezuma County has requested letters of support, uh, that will help hopefully obtain grant funding that will help backfill current funding gaps, uh, and for a federal match, or a match for federal grants, uh, for the pathways to Mesa Verde. This has been, uh, in process for about nine years now, and, uh, Mesa, uh, Montezuma County has done a very good job of, uh, helping to keep this going. And, uh, they, uh, their person, James Dietrich, who is currently working on this, is working diligently to try to fill in these funding gaps and, uh, is requesting assistance from us. We're coming to you tonight because we feel like this is appropriate to come to the council and get your authorization to, uh, permit the mayor to sign these, and, uh, hopefully, uh, help bolster our, uh, case to obtain grant funding for this important project. So, I submit it to council for consideration.
I thi- I think this is a, a fantastic project. Uh, first of all, it pulls in, um, our communities from, from Mankas and Cortez and, and our partners. That makes, the other thing I noticed that this was identified as one of the top sixteen, uh, trail projects for Colorado, and I think we have an obligation to make sure that that comes complete. Madam Mayor, I move that, uh, authorize the mayor to sign on behalf of the city two letters of support for Montezuma County for the Colorado Parks and Wildlife CPW Non-Motorized Trail Grant and the Great Outdoors Colorado, uh, GOCO Community Impact Grant for the development of the paths to Mesa Verde Trail.
Second. Motion made by Lewis and seconded by Dehaven?
Keef Offer?
Aye.
Lewis?
Yes.
Spruul?
Yes.
Dehaven?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes.
Thank you, mayor and council. Uh, just for your heads up, in future meetings, we'll expect actually more to come on this, because they're working diligently. So, there'll be more requests of council in the future. Thank you.
Great. Welcome back. All right, we're gonna move on to D on our agenda. Seven D is resolution number ten, series twenty-two-five, a resolution amending the city council agenda and public comment rules and format, uh, presented by Drew Sanders, city manager.
Yes, mayor and council, over the last several years, uh, since we've had the current, uh, agenda format, it's been mentioned several times that, you know, some, that we have a, a second public participation portion, but that's after the executive session portion of our agenda. And, uh, we don't have an awful lot of executive sessions, but when we do, oftentimes, that can span an hour or more. And, uh, I'm really grateful that we have a council who actually cares about the community and wants to hear from them and make that as easy as possible. So, this was a council request to amend this, and it's just a housekeeping, uh, matter where we're just asking to simply switch those two and put the public participation before the executive session in future meetings. That will not apply tonight, obviously, but it would in the future as of next meeting. So, I submitted to council for consideration in approving that housekeeping matter.
And, and I would note that we made some additional, uh, edits to the, uh, rules regarding public comment. Uh, one of the main clarifications was that, uh, uh, council always requests that if people are gonna comment during the public participation section, that they not comment on items that are gonna be on the agenda for that night. And so, we clarified that language, that if, if you wanna comment on an item that's gonna be on the agenda, wait until that agenda item is called. And, and, uh, the, the mayor always lets people, even if it's not a public hearing, generally, if somebody wants to comment on a, on a particular item, uh, they're allowed to. But that way, uh, it, it, uh, kind of focuses the comments on the item at hand, rather than having them come earlier in the night, or after the item's already been decided.
Great, thank you.
I'd just like to say it only makes common sense, uh, because the public shouldn't have to sit here for an hour, and the staff that's here that's sitting waiting, uh, if they have a public comment that they'd like to meet or talk about, our staff is real good about talking to the person about their concerns. If we go into, uh, a closed session and we're gone for an hour, uh, some of the staff needs to leave, and the, uh, participants of our community get tired of waiting. So, uh, this just makes common sense to me.
I've, I've got to agree, and council member Spruul, I want to thank you for, uh, bringing that up to our attention. I'm really embarrassed that we haven't, uh, addressed this earlier, and I apologize to anyone that had to sit through an executive session waiting to make public comment.
I move that council approve regula- uh, resolution number ten, series twenty-two-five, a resolution amending the city council agenda and public comments rules format.
Second.
Motion made by Spruul and seconded by Lewis?
Dehaven?
Yes.
Dobry?
Yes.
Keef Offer?
Aye.
Spruul?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes. All right, we're gonna move on to seven E on our agenda, ordinance number thirteen forty-six, series twenty-two-five, the first reading of an ordinance to amend the code ordinance, uh, resolutions, guidelines, and protocols to allow city council members to pres- to participate in city council meetings remotely via, via conference or other electronic means, presented by Patrick Coleman, our city attorney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, as you all are aware, this item has been discussed off and on for, uh, a few months now. And at the last meeting, council asked that we bring forward a, uh, ordinance that, uh, is similar to what has been presented before. The, the main change that we made at, at council's suggestion was that, uh, we changed it from a maximum of four meetings that a, a council member could miss annually up to s- we changed it to six. So, that's the primary change from previous iterations of this ordinance. This is on first reading, so the second reading and the public hearing portion will occur, uh, in two weeks. But, uh, uh, we did wanna present this on first reading. Uh, if there are other changes, certainly you can bring them up at the dais now. If you see things, you can wait until the public hearing portion, because we, we certainly can amend the ordinance before it's voted on after a public hearing. So, uh, I'll leave it up to you as to, uh, I guess generally, we don't have public comment on first reading would be the only caution I would indicate.
I would like to comment that I only heard one council member suggest six. It was previously put to us for four, and then one council member said, "Let's just do six." So, I'd like to know from the council if they would rather entertain six than four.
I'm in agreement with six. Same. Okay. And, yeah, this is a first reading, so we'll set the hearing and, um, second reading, and that will be the public's chance to comment on, uh, this topic.
You, you will need to vote on approving the ordinance on first reading.
Yeah. I move that council approve on first reading ordinance number thirteen forty-six, series twenty-two-five, and ordinance presented in the following guidelines and protocols of the city of Cortez to allow city council members to participate in council meetings remotely via video conferences and set for a second and final reading and public hearing on September twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
Motion made by Dehaven and seconded by Keef Offer?
Spruul?
No.
Dobry?
No.
Lewis?
Yes.
Dehaven?
Yes.
Keef Offer?
Aye.
Medina?
Yes. All right, we're gonna move on to seven F on our agenda, ordinance number thirteen forty-seven. This is the first reading of an ordinance amending the code of the city of Cortez to include regulations regarding natural medicine, presented by Patrick Coleman, city attorney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, in nineteen twenty-two, nineteen twenty-two, I'm getting all, two thousand twenty-two, uh, the, the people of state of Col- of the, of Colorado approved the Enabling Act that legalized natural medicine. Uh, and this is plant-or-fungus-based psychedelic substances known as, uh, psilocybin or psilocin. And Dennis always pronounces it better.
Psilocybin.
Yeah. Um, in any event, the, the, uh, the constitutional amendment and the, uh, statutes allow local jurisdictions to regulate time, place, and manner. We can't prohibit, uh, the location of these healing centers or grow facilities, uh, but we can do some limited regulation in terms of where they can be placed and how they operate. Uh, with that in mind, council had asked, uh, staff to begin preparing regulations, and council has hold, held a couple of, uh, workshops in that regard. What you have before you is an ordinance on first reading, uh, that, uh, we are presenting for your consideration. And again, it would be first reading with the public hearing occu- occurring in two weeks. And, uh, I'm open for any questions you may have.
I, ordinance, sorry, I move that council approve ordinance number thirteen forty-seven, series twenty-two-five, an ordinance which amends the code of the city of Cortez to include the regulation of natural medicine, healing centers, cultivation facilities, product manufacturers, testing facilities, and any other related license or permit involving natural medicine, which includes without limitation psilocybin or psilocin, and set the ordinance for second and final reading and public hearing on September twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five. Second.
Motion made by Spruul and seconded by Dobry?
Excuse me, just for clarification, uh, this is, this is first reading of this ordinance. That was not stated in the motion.
Dehaven?
Yes.
Keef Offer?
Aye.
Dobry?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Spruul?
Yes.
Medina?
Aye. Or yes, thank you. Okay, and thanks, uh, council member Lewis for noticing that. All right, we're gonna move on to seven G on our, uh, agenda, ordinance number thirteen forty-eight, series twenty-two-five. This is a first reading of an ordinance amending the code of the city of Cortez regarding distance measurements and signage for medical and retail marijuana establishments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, the city has already adopted regulations concerning, uh, both medical marijuana and retail sales of marijuana. Uh, the council had asked for some changes regarding the method of measuring the distances. There are certain restrictions regarding the distance limitations between, uh, marijuana stores and between marijuana stores and, uh, public facilities like schools and daycare centers and that sort of thing. Uh, in the past, we had measured it, and, and it's a fifteen-hundred-foot limitation, and it was measured by the, the method by which people would travel. So, usually, the s- the street or the sidewalk, uh, is how that was measured. There was some concern that, uh, that was perhaps not as accurate as could be. So, what we came up with was a measurement in the form of, uh, you know, to use the vernacular, as the crow flies, uh, which, uh, eliminates the, the bends and corners that a sidewalk or a street may have. And we reduced the distance to one thousand feet. Uh, that regulation won't apply to current marijuana licenses, uh, but if any new ones want to be, uh, brought in, or if any of the current ones, uh, abandon their license and, and go out of business, then they, they couldn't be renewed without complying with this new regulation, if, if you were to pass it. Uh, the, the other issue besides the measurement was signage. And, um, we have signage in the land use code. We have regulations for that. And, uh, they wanted some more specificity in terms of the marijuana code. And it, it talks about, um, different types of signage. And I'll just read the, the limitations. Um, it, it says that, uh, retail and mar- medical marijuana centers may not erect- commonly associated with or which allude to the use of marijuana. You can't have electronically illuminated or lighted signs. You can't have mechanical, wind, or air-assisted moving parts. You can't have inflatable signs. You can't have signs that portray marijuana or cannabis leaves, plants, or products. And the signs can't directly or indirectly advertise, market, or promote any discount sales, price promotions, specials, or direct comparisons of its products or services to those of any other business. You can't have signs that are designed to appeal to persons under the age of 21 or that are primarily targeted to persons under the age of 21. And you can't have signs that contain any cartoon characters, animation, or caricatures of any person, animal, or object. So, that's the primary change in signage, and I think, based on council input at the previous workshops, the idea was to have a little more specificity in what is prohibited with the idea, I think, to primarily focus on not allowing signage that would appeal to people under 21. So, with that, I'll take any questions.
Mr. Coleman, I just wanted to make sure that you, that I'm understanding directly that the distance requirement does not apply to the transfer of licenses as well, so as long?
Correct. If you have a valid license, now, if you let your license expire and then try to transfer it, it would be considered a new license, and it would, this new regulation would apply. But if an ongoing licensed facility, if the owner transfers their license to a new owner or creates a corporate entity and transfers it to the corporate entity or something like that, then the regulations would not apply.
We spent several work sessions and city council meetings discussing this. I think now we've come up with a very accurate way of measuring those distances, and I think we've added clarity to our signage. So, with that, I move that council on first reading of ordinance Number 1348, Series 2025, and ordinance amending the code of the city of Cortez regarding distance measurements and signage for medical and retail marijuana establishments, and set for a second and final reading and public hearing on September 23, 2025.
Second.
Motion made by Lewis and seconded by Dobree.
Dehaven?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Spruill?
Yes.
Keefe Offer?
Aye.
Dobree?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes. All right, we're going to move on to number eight on our agenda, draft resolutions and ordinances. We have none, so number nine is our city attorney report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's, the council was interested in hearing more about the process for amending the charter and the city code. I did send you an email previously, and I just want to reiterate that based on previous conversations, it's my understanding that the council would like to proceed with amending the city charter by adopting the ordinance that sets the ballot title and sets the ballot questions in January of 2026, which would allow for the election to be held on April 7 of 2026, which is the regular city election. And in order to meet the January 7th, or January 13th first reading and January 27th second reading of the ordinance, we need to develop the draft, and I think, I guess I'm open to some discussion from council as to how much public participation you think would be necessary or appropriate. Obviously, with Thanksgiving holiday and the Christmas holiday, we're somewhat limited on time, but I think if we get everybody's internal staff comments, say, I said November 1st, but I think in conversations with the city manager, October 1st would be more appropriate so that we can have a draft of the ballot questions to give the public something to work off of, and, you know, we can have some outreach. My thought is a couple of outreach, maybe one at the chamber building and one here at City Hall, that are specific to just public outreach for those items. I guess I'd be open to suggestions from you. So, we're doing code amendments, which are not time-sensitive, and we're doing charter amendments, which are time-sensitive due to the requirement of an election. We could have draft amendments for both the code, which simply requires an ordinance, and the charter at the same time. The benefit I see to that is it may be difficult to get the public to come out two separate times, you know, for two, for, once for the code and once for the charter, even if we offer them a couple of opportunities to do that for each item. So, my thought is perhaps maybe combine them, and we can do the ordinance for the code amendment on the same night that we do the ordinance for the setting the ballot title. But I certainly would be open to comments or suggestions on that process.
I'm a little concerned of the burden on staff to get all of that done when we're kind of working on the budget right now, but I do want to get, if one is less time-sensitive, focus on the one that is and get it to the public, you know, to see what we're, so they can see what we're thinking and provide comment on it.
Sure. And I think at those public outreach sessions and during council meeting for first and second reading on the charter amendment ordinance, we can advertise and encourage the public to provide staff with their comments on the code amendments as well, but I, I'm thankful that you are considering the burden on staff, although I would say that Mr. Sanders and our finance director are the primary people involved in the budget preparation, although the other department heads and their staff are also working on the budget. So, if that's the preference, I certainly appreciate that consideration, and perhaps in February, we can do the code amendment ordinance.
I want to hear from the rest of the council, though.
I was going to suggest, I do think it makes sense to at least keep them together at the beginning, because I don't know that the community always knows where the charter ends and the code begins, so I think having an open process there where we can hear from the community about changes either to charter or code, and then move forward with the charter changes on our schedule, and if there's any issues with the code, with the code piece, we can continue.
Yeah, I agree with you, Councilmember Dobree.
I would agree with that as well. I also agree with Mayor Medina in regards to the city staff with the October 1 date. Even though we are meeting on September 26 to go over budgets, they may have budget changes that we bring to their attention, and I think we need to be cognizant of that.
I guess I would even go one step further. I agree with what's been said so far, but I wonder if we should, at some point, even have kind of a 101, I don't know what it looks like, worksheet or an open session, or we do it in a public meeting, but what is the charter? What's it address? What are, what's the code? What's, you know, what do those look like? And actually explain that to people to kind of like really define what the difference is between them, where to find them, how these maybe impact them on a day-to-day basis, all of those sorts of things, because I think that we want to really maximize public input. We really need for people to be able to understand it in the very beginning.
I would agree with that, and I would also note that one of the changes that I noticed when I first got here was if you go to the city website and pull up the charter or the city code, they're merged together in the same, essentially, the same document, and the charter is denoted, and then it goes right into the code, and if you're not using it a lot, you don't know which is which. So, my, one of my recommendations will be that we split those, and we have them actually appear as separate documents, much in the way that the land use code is a separate document from the city code, because I think it's confusing, and obviously, I think you'll see some of our recommendations on what goes into the charter, what's in it now, and what staff believes perhaps maybe should be handled by ordinance rather than charter, because as you can see, the amending the charter is a fairly cumbersome process, which is important for certain aspects of the rules that govern the city, but others, I think, perhaps may be more efficiently accomplished by an ordinance rather than a charter amendment.
Okay, yeah, so what I'm hearing is can we have like a work session where you do a presentation on both? That way, it's recorded, we can reference that to the community. For anyone who didn't make it, they can watch that on their own to learn about, just get some background context on those, and then get staff changes as soon as we can, and then decide, like, have them both be part of the public hearing or public meetings, and then we'll decide like if the code needs to slow down, have more time, and we need to focus on the charter, but let's tackle both right now.
Okay.
Okay. Cool, thank you, Pat. Or thank you, Mr. Coleman. We'll move on to number 10 on our agenda, city manager report.
Yes, good evening, council. I do have a report for you. Mine's fairly lengthy this evening, so I'm just going to hit some of the high points in the interest of time. The rest of it will be in the published manager's report that will go on the website. But we've already talked pretty at length about the airport runway rehabilitation project and the details therein. I just wanted to remind council, and by extension, the community, that this project's effectively going to start on September 29, although mobilization will start earlier, and it will last through March of 2026. And what's important for travelers here as well as pilots is that there will be a 20-day closure of the runway from October 4 to the 24th, and I know from, I know that Jeremy's done a very good job of notifying the different affected organizations and aviation folks. Moving on, the Cortez library is going to be launching a new catalog system, which is called Aspen Cat, on September 24 of this year. Our library director and her team have worked very hard to bring this to pass. This system offers an easier and more effective interface for patrons, a larger database of available materials to our users. And by the way, this will not affect any of the library patrons or Libby accounts. Next, our municipal court will be holding its third annual networking event on September 29 of this building. This event draws court clerks, administrators, and judges from across southwest Colorado to Cortez to learn and network from one another or with one another. This year's topic will be courtroom security. I'd also like to make a separate mention on this that we had a contingent from the city of Delta come down, and yesterday, I believe, or is it Monday?
It is Monday.
Monday, sorry. And we're pretty honored to have this because they literally came and observed our outreach court that Carla and Judge Padilla has put together and are looking to adopt that model. So, that's a real feather in our cap. Thank you, municipal court. And then, just finally, we've already mentioned, we are in the throes of our annual budget. I just want to talk about a quick couple of dates here. We're holding, or department meetings as we speak, and then there is the council budget workshop slated for Friday, September 26, 8:30 to 4:30 p.m. here in City Hall, and then we expect to have that first reading for the fiscal year 2026 budget on October 28 is the anticipated date. But we are by statute required to present that to you in advance of October 15. We intend to do that. So, if, any questions from council, and if not, then I will submit that to you, Mayor.
We usually open the budget for public comment before it comes to council. Are we doing that again?
As best we can. The problem is before it comes to council is that it's still kind of wide open. So, what we've been doing is we try to get a draft out there in advance, but we are very clear it's just a draft, goes to the council budget workshop. Right after that, we make our changes almost on the fly in that meeting, and then we roll it out again for the public, so they have it well in advance. So, October 28 is that first reading date, which only sets the stage, and then they will have clear into November to comment, ask for changes, anything come along, and we have the public hearing. So, we're trying to make sure we give as close as possible to 45 days for the community.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to 11 on our agenda, the city council committee reports. 11A is the mayor's report on a workshop, and we had no workshop tonight. So, we'll move on to B, other board reports. We'll start with Councilmember Dobree. Okay. Okay, no reports. Then we'll move on to 12 on our agenda, an executive session, which we do have one tonight, and then our public participation section is afterwards. So, if you want to stay and make any comments, you'll have to, this is the last time you have to wait till after our executive session. All right, do we have a motion to go into executive session?
Before we do that, we, at our last meeting, we moved, we made a motion to move that. Could we do that again this evening? Is that something that would be okay to move the?
That is the prerogative of the chair. If she wishes to switch that up, then absolutely.
Okay, I mean, is there anyone from the audience who would like to make a comment? Okay, seeing none, then yeah, we'll move on to our executive session.
I move that council go into executive session for discussion of a personnel matter under CRS Section 24-6-4024F and not involving any specific employees who have requested discussion of the matter in open session, any member of this body or elected official, the appointment of any person to fill an office of this body or of an elected official, or personnel policies that did not require the discussion of matters personal to particular employees. Specifically, the purpose of this executive session will be to conduct a quarterly appointed official performance update with Patrick Coleman, the Cortez city attorney. Mr. Coleman has not requested this executive session occur in an open meeting.
Second.
Motion made by Dobree and seconded by Spruill?
Lewis?
Yes.
Dehaven?
Yes.
Keefe Offer?
Aye.
Dobree?
Yes.
Spruill?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes. Okay. Thank you all for being here tonight.
It is still September ninth, twenty twenty five and the time is nine twenty nine P M. The executive session has concluded and council has reconvened into open session. Those persons participating in the executive session were myself, Mayor Richard Medina, Mayor Pro Tem Dennis Spruill and council members Matthew Kiefauer, Lydia Dehaven, Bill Lewis and April, or, and Robert Dobry. Also participating were city manager Drew Sanders at the beginning and city attorney Patrick Coleman for the entirety of the executive session. No adoption of any proposed policy, position, resolution, rule, regulation or formal action occurred during the executive session. If any member of council or a member of the public believes that the subject matter of the executive session was not statutory authorized or that the discussions that occurred in the executive session strayed from the announced subject matter, please speak up now. All right, seeing none, and since there are no further agenda items, I will accept a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Madam Mayor, I move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made by Lewis and seconded by Dobry.
Kiefauer.
Aye.
Spruill.
Yes.
Dobry.
Yes.
Dehaven.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Medina. Yes. Good night.
Good night.